All right. Right now we're official. All right. It is December 9th. Twenty five it is, six thirty. Take the motion to hold the order and set the agenda. Second. All right, Mr. Harrison, Senator Gilmore, all in favor?
Hi.
Name of this. The City of Situate is committed to providing an environment that respects our meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner. If there's disagreement, we value the participation of our community. We want all participants, including those who are marginalized and unorganized, to welcome and respect it. We ask our committee members, everyone who participates, to commit to standard support and respect our community. With that, do we have any zoom-ins or walk-ins? Okay. Come on up. You just, I always forget to ask, just take your name and the address, your address for the round. Good evening. My name is Adam Keller, and I represent the John P. Heine Board of Land. I was, we were here a few months ago, and you asked me to, I gave you a sheet, information sheet. So I wanted to drop off some information sheets and some postcards that you wanted, that you wanted to put around town. Also wanted to drop off a couple of certificates. One is John's Silver Star certificate and the write-up that came with that. So we're hoping that these could be added to the memorial over at the library. Actually, we've got the shot. One last thing, just wanted to remind everybody that on December 20th is the anniversary of John's death, thirty-six years. And we're going to have an anonymous donor put up $10,000 match fund. Running that through our website. So all donations will be doubled, matched up to $10,000. So if you could keep an eye on that, I greatly appreciate it.
No, what's the website?
Website is www.a measure of a man.org, all one word. And it's on the information sheets that are here, in the postcards. I appreciate the time. Everybody has a great holiday. Any questions about anything else we're up to? Okay. Great. Thank you so much. Thank you. Well, anything else? Any zoom-ins? I don't see any zoom-ins. No one here. At this point, we're normally do the, before the town administrator. Fortunately, the town administrator has to run a personal matter. I will see if he's able to join us again later. But I will, I'll take this time, help with updates. Number one, this Friday, Santa will be returning. We got the call from Mrs. Plaza a while ago. And so Santa will be back in North Situate for the North Situate Holiday Festival. Starts at four o'clock, is that right? So everyone should come on down, check that out, lots of other activities. And again, shop at Toulon Gap over at the Situate. Wonderful. And also, we should congratulate our state champions, our state champion football team, who are good again. Beating Tewksbury, never in doubt. We moved down by fourteen at halftime. It was never in doubt. We all knew it was gonna happen. But congratulations to them. They worked hard, all year. So with that, anything else? Or down some things?
No. Well, there is a raffle included in the North Situate Village Holiday Thing. That the prize basket has over $20,000 worth of swag from all the merchants. So it is worth your $10 ticket for sure. You can go online. I think it's for one four three's website to enter.
Well, that's amazing.
Yeah.
All right. So now we'll go with the budget reviews. We'll start FY twenty-seven budget reviews. Let's start with.
Planning.
Planning, how are you?
Oh, everything would dream. How about you?
Very well. Give us a second here to pull this up. So one seventy-five.
H five.
H five. Perfect. And again, with, again, we've gone through this. We know some of the numbers, some of the highlights to see what's going well, what's not doing well. And, yeah.
All right, so the numbers are the numbers. The Director of Planning and Development Assistant TA was taken out of the funding for this year. Everything else is remaining, pretty much a standard salaries and technical services and, you know, printing for your nice new shiny zoning bylaws that you got there.
Yes.
Currently up to date. So that, the money's the money part. We've had a busy year again. We finally, you know, resolved MBTA communities. We finally resolved accessory dwelling units. We've been implementing projects with the MBTA communities in the North Situate and in Greenbush. We, you know, we worked on a number of different projects under construction. We've got a lot under construction. We have subsidized housing inventory. We keep up to date. We do numerous stormwater permits and accessory dwelling permits. And we meet with people all the time for potential new developments. We revise the stormwater regulations to be compliant with EPA's MS four permit. We're working on the bylaw now for town meeting. And we worked to update, we worked to coordinate the updating of the Housing Production Plan. And we're working on multiple zoning for town meeting. Most of the zoning that we're working on this year is really just housekeeping. It's finding loose ends from MBTA communities, accessory dwelling units. It changes because somebody, you know, somebody brings in a question about a project. Oops, we need to fix that in the zoning bylaw.
Excellent.
So that's the basic bottom line.
Well, and for folks at home, I'll go back, two years FY twenty-six, budget was $164,000. FY twenty-six, our budget $169,000. And again, two things I want to emphasize. Number one, the amount we're able to do, the amount of money is remarkable. We think about, again, there's two massive state projects, our state policies that we have to deal with. Never mind all the enforcement and upkeep around town. So that's what many other departments is doing a lot, but a little. And again, just to reemphasize, when Frashia said it very firm, I'm sorry to jump over, to jump over you. We have to remember as a community, I would have thought that this year would have been the year we would have needed an operational override, how thin our margins are this year. So for folks at home, you know, that we've asked a lot of these, all the departments, what a five percent cut would be. Looking at Norwell and Hanover and Marshfield and Harbor and Easton and Mansfield, Plunkton, all of them for overrides. Stonem and up there's gonna have the largest override in state history. So we are at the line where we are. I guess I just want to say thank you for all the work we do, given the budget that we're on. And we're best we can to stay where we are as we kind of swim us through. I just want to say that for all departments at large. Sorry, filibuster like that, but I'll open up questions and comments.
The only comment I would have is you had a great year. You did a lot of work, especially the ADUs. And my compliments to you that.
Thank you.
To both of you, no, both of them. I'm all clear.
Have a wild.
Is it? Just thank you, Frank.
Okay. Thank you. That was, yeah, that was, yeah, I mean, again, for folks at home, essentially, we're talking level funded. So thank you for all the work.
Have a good night and happy holidays.
Thank you. All right. Conservation. Come on up.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good, how are you? Thank you and for having us here to talk about this. We, our budget is level again with contractual increases for a couple salaries in our, in our budget. I mean, the short updates would be, we have two new members. So that is good because now we're back up to seven, which helps for everybody's taking in and votes for all the different hearings. And hearings are up from previous years and are probably more complicated, which just adds to review time. But everybody, all commissioners give a lot of time to things moving forward so we can be permitting all these products that we can. People investigate their homes and such.
Thanks again. I, I get the part of the budget restraints and the commission understands that, trying to work within those. It is becoming more challenging, I think, is for all of the works that deal with building and development. There's a lot of pressure on all those different groups, whether it's ours or planning or what help, the building or whatever. And that does present a problem. The amount of filings, permit applications, reviews, these jobs, projects are more complex. We're on the ocean with a lot of these. We have a large project in the Mississippi, down in Hummer Rock. These soak up a tremendous amount of time. And I think it does stretch all those different looks, trying to kind of hold a line on, I don't get it. All kinds of pressure, safety, schools, all that. But at the same time, the town is growing and there's real pressure for development. I don't know what the answer to that is. But it's, it's not easy for, to deal with all these hearings and filings and this time constraints. And then again, complexity, we try to pick more fees onto the applicant in terms of peer reviews and final fees. But it's a lot. I don't know if there's something you can look at that and see whether the fee structure might be able to be changed so that that would help fund some of these departments a little better. Right now, the fees that we collect, I think we much go back to the general fund and then come back in. But if there's a possibility to look at that and see if that's a way to help. And I'm not talking about just conservation. So, so across the board that I can see. We are really happy to have a full board. That's definitely helpful because people doing this in meetings or whatnot and gives a chance to spread out the work amongst. We also really appreciate the additional funding that we receive, maintenance and care. And we're working hard to put that to good use and try to implement some more programs and also the support and make it add some more in. So all good news for us. Keep that, appreciate the hard work that Jen and Josh do in the office. And we meet a lot of people and they get good, multiply good reviews from folks that have the interaction with the commission when they come here. That they're tended to and give you a good direction and assistance.
Do you want to add that a personal resource officer is part of our department also and coordinates a lot of the activities of maintaining our community rating system, which ultimately continues to provide an insurance discount for those, in those areas, which we'll be working with for also on when projects come through and make sure things are compliant. And this all goes back to the complexity. They're not one hearing situations. Some of these are coming back two, three times over a many months. Wonderful for everybody.
Trying to maintain the FEMA compliance with permitting process and making sure that we do follow these rules. And they're difficult, except with the coastal issues between CZMS advisory, FEMA. Trying to make sure that we condition our projects properly and then work in conjunction with the building department, which is hugely helpful and other boards. And Jen's right, Corey has been a wonderful help, not only in doing the network, but all very helpful with the sounding board for coastal, coastal issues and helping us navigate some of those pieces great depth of knowledge. So fortunately, she's part of that.
I've got a few questions though.
Well, I have a question, Frank, because we, I'm a, you know, I'm a huge supporter of open space and public lands and the ability for public to use open space. Obviously, you guys do a ton of, of not just maintenance, but planning to make sure to protect those spaces. When we look at the increase, I believe, because we look to add inventory to our open space for our public, how does that stream your time and budget to support relative to increasing what lands we hold as a town for public?
So we've been, well, on the physical side, we have been really fortunate to have a great volunteer. So, you know, we acquired a lot of that open space in CPC. Town supported us in our access, parking areas, the forestry game and mixed lane, meeting for Alster. So we got the parking areas in and then we had some trail network and volunteers that have expanded that. And we've done mapping and it's easier for people to pull those things up now and find out what the abilities they have. The, the next piece of having that property is, are we managing it best way we can? And we'd like to institute maybe some more forestry programs or some other programs that would help environmentally as well as recreation, you know, if we could do a little better job. We did get a forestry program, then we got a grant, some additional money. And we have a good inventory, a lot of the land we have in terms of timber or other resources. And now we look at that and say, what's the best way to manage that? And we are starting to look at those areas. Jen and I attended a workshop in Middleboro this fall, some really good input from them. And we can reach out to conservation and recreation and they can give us some assistance. They have a forester. Start to work with that a little bit and see if we can come up with some more programs. We're also working with the folks, the community guy, folks have been great. We've had some good feedback on that. And Damon, Appleton Field rather, has been growing and keeps sharing this fault. And then we, because we can't say that we do a fair amount of work kind of like it. So we're getting them down, but it's, it's a lot of hard work. And then you have all the, the other difficult part is the enforcement. Not everybody wants to follow the rules. And that is very kind of the city. So.
That gets answered here. No, it does answer my question and I asked it sort of on purpose, partly because I want to recognize how many people in our town do volunteer to take care of a lot of these properties, help the conservation commission. Talk about how much we get to do, the money that's spread thin. I think that's one of the important ways that, that people that are watching meetings and listening can understand that if you volunteer a couple of hours here and there, it makes a huge difference over the course of 20,000 people that could be out there. Creating these spaces that are more kind of linky property are so beautiful now that, that can be used by everybody. So I encourage people to get involved. You know, it's, it's not always easy to get involved in ZVA or in planning, but you can, anybody with zero experience can come and actually be a useful resource to the town on conservation. So it's important though.
And we've found that best, best way to address a lot of the properties is to get folks to almost embrace that. We get a group that takes an area and then they know about it and we put back, and it's, it's amazing how these folks work with each other. But finding different folks that said, geez, I really, really enjoy the Driftway property and I want to be part of that. Or, or something in West End. And I was, Nicholas and Sarah, most help has helped us with some of the larger projects. You know, they have a little bit more energy and horsepower and, you know, whether we need a bridge or some extra clearing.
Right, clearing the trails, cleaning things up, trees falling.
I appreciate all you guys do in our community desk and stuff, but we understand that a really great resource for us.
I have no questions, but if anyone wants to come and help and garden at Appleton Field this spring, I will welcome them, open up.
I think, you know, we have this very lofty report so professionally written, but when you look at the magnitude of the statistics in here, I don't know how we get that out to the town, but I can think of nothing better than what you said, Frank, of people that become attached to a certain entity, crop, crop, land, area, water, chi, whatever, than how redeeming that must be as an individual to do something for your town. That yes, it helps the town, but it's also quite personally redeeming for individuals to get out and then to breathe the air and work in the land. And like my compliments to you all. And I, I think we should look at the fee structure to see if we can offset some help, you know, with that. I think that's something we will have to get into.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I really appreciate the data that we got with this for Jen and your team. I do, we do a lot with a little. And this is a very, a good example, the last budget, this budget, this, actually, most of this meeting were good examples of doing a lot with a little. And it's all staffing. There's, there's like, there's nothing, there's nothing besides staffing and the number of notice of attendance, number of public meetings. It's all, you all have done a lot and significantly more than other towns, because we were looking at other towns at one point. And our staffing model is quite lean compared to other towns. Also the trail maintenance. And I appreciate the ongoing list, like you've done what you can do this year. There's, there's even plans next year to Europe and you're, we get so much out of our volunteers with that little amount of money that is spent. Basically, every trail in this town was built by volunteers at one point or another. So we appreciate that. And I appreciate your continued dedication to the office. Thank you.
Again, I don't think people realize how easy some other towns have to, they don't have an ocean. Like river, they go down to the ocean, all the different wetlands, all the different marshlands, back to, yeah. Hummer Rock, it's, things are separated and you go over the bastion. Things are so complicated in the ultimate suit. And I guess my, my agency's, my question on the complexity is some of the frustration and time. Is it waiting for responses from these agencies? Is it all the new mandates or just trying to figure out all the new? Are they just not all aligned, like FEMA's talking, one thing, CZM, something else, and it's all? Like where's the, where's the, I'm not trying to throw agency under the bus, but where's the pressure point?
I, I think everybody's busy. Everybody wants to do something. And everybody wants to move forward as quick as they can. And so there you have, that's my thought, just a simple answer, but.
I think we are fortunate, everybody works relatively well, often the room compared to the building department, a lot of that. Working with permitting things along the ocean, working with the building department, they have an understanding of FEMA and requirements there. And then actually now with, with Corey, with, with the community rating service. And I acknowledge, just to, although, to those to both Jen and Josh, you know, they came into this, they're both fairly new in their positions and, and the energy and where they relax things is, is great. And again, people are happy to come in and talk to someone, may not be their answer, but they met with somebody or they had a chance to chat with somebody and they got some direction. I think that happens a lot in, in here in general, which is good. This one, oh, so just as an example though, of the difficulties that we're having, oftentimes with these projects and complexities, we require a peer review first. So there's a couple of weapons people that can do that. The hardest part we're having right now is on the coastal projects, we cannot find a coastal geologist to review these projects. That's hot. They're just not, they're there and really need that level of expertise when you start to differentiate between the moon or, or there's just so many different technical pieces. We need someone of that level of knowledge that can look at these things, dissect the project a little bit and be sure that the application is correct. And with Jen's search, I mean, she's got more emails out there fishing for that and we haven't come up with it.
So, yeah, that's good to know, that's good to know. And, uh, okay.
If anybody's looking for a profession.
AI profession, professional geologist. Get on it.
The future is rocks.
The future, right.
Or how the dunes move or the sand shifts or.
Interpreting altered areas.
Yeah.
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 Great, all right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. It'll be, it's all for it.
ZVA.
ZVA, yes. The inspections.
You want to do zoning first or inspections first?
No, I'm, I'm going for the, for the humblest too.
Yeah, so we'll do that.
So, good evening. Thanks for having me and my colleagues in the other departments. As Frank indicated, we work pretty closely together on most of this stuff that has to do with developer. High points of the zoning board during the past year. We, for a long time, were down a couple of members. We now have two, two members. If you like this, I'll let you review. And so we are, excuse me, we have five active members on the board, which is really, really helpful. The main role of the board, the main activity, I'm saying, the board recently has been the cottages at all of the 40B project, which after being kind of a dead in the water for a couple of years, has come back to life and is now under construction. Then that's being closely monitored by conservation, janitor conservation. And zoning has the sort of overall control and permitting of the issue, the comprehensive permit for the project. So we're keeping track of records and keeping track of the testing, for instance, which is happening on a site right now. And going forward, first home is the constructed, well, as we speak, and we've got permit applications in work. I think it's about ten or twelve additional homes. The project's going to total twenty-four single family units separated, each having its own swamp and land. Six of those will be designated as affordable and priced and marketed that way. And a lot of system will be utilized. So it's an exciting project and it seems to be going very well.
Is that for perpetuity, those six units or?
Yes. Yeah, the way that's set up is that if you do, for instance, sell, your prop, well, it's limited, you have to sell to another person who is eligible for that, for going over it. So yes, it's in perpetuity. As far as numbers, well, due to November meeting, the board's heard sixteen cases presented. And in terms of finances, that's generated $1,000 approximately in revenue. So projecting that total out for the rest of the year, somewhere around $10,000, which is pretty close to what we've done in fiscal twenty-four and twenty-five. Not much change. I will say, and Frank mentioned this also, that a lot of the cases that we're seeing seem to be more complex and have different facets. It's not simply people who want to move to additional. and have different facets. It's not simply people who want to move an issue on their home and may need relief from setback requirements. There's a lot of, more than usual, it seems to me, complicated cases with many facets and who works. So that's a little challenging and exciting, because it's generally pretty interesting stuff. As far as the departmental costs, we really have ticked up only a couple of thousand dollars from our budget of last year, and that's driven by contractual salary increases. Last year, for about three or four months, in the late winter, early spring, we did not have a zoning board secretary, that position had been vacated, and we hadn't hired a replacement. So a lot about late summer, sorry, late spring, early summer, we were able to fill that position with Eric P. Mosel, who's just been outstanding. Eric's also on the conservation commission, so it's a terrific crossover, you know, bringing that knowledge and knowledge of what that commission's up to in the building department on a day-to-day basis. It's been extremely valuable. So we're very fortunate to have filled the position and very fortunate with who's been filled by. So that's about it for zoning and the question.
A question, when you talk about the increased complexity, I don't doubt that at all. Do you have any guesses as to why this seems to be the trend? Is it having to do with the scarcity of projects as we fight to create housing?
I think that's. Yeah, that's substantially true, and also the fact that, you know, the old sort of saw is that all the good man has been used. And so everything that comes before us in terms of new development seems to be problematic in one way or another. And also people find they are pushing the envelope in a lot of cases. There's a lot of money coming into this town and wants to have big houses, sometimes those are on small lots. You know, that's a pretty typical, typical situation, has been to a lot of them. In some of the larger projects, there's several, like Green Bush neighborhood, which are actually in the permitting process and have perhaps slowed down just because of interest rates and various things like that, but are going to come back for more, I would say, over the next two years. Then, of course, when North City Village gets sewed, that's going to be a tremendous impact on all of our departments, so. And the complexity of those is definitely, you know, more than just a typical single-family home on a compliant residential lot. That's what we see happen.
So what I hear from you, I heard from Frank, I heard especially from Karen, you know, those three boards represent the bulk of the workload that goes into developing processes. And the complexity component, the density component, and the pushing the envelope, I guess, component seem to be trends that I don't think any of us would be surprised by, actually not surprised by. But what I also hear is that, is that where we are stretched thin in so many areas in town that are difficult to have a great answer to, at least in the short term. I don't have an answer, but as we talk about discussions of fee structures and things, it seems to me that there ought to be a discussion of where we might look at not necessarily continuing to increase the burden on our existing long-term taxpayers that have been here for, you know, long periods of time. But for what seems to be to be a very popular town with lots of recognition and with lots of people interested in coming this direction from Boston, from other places, not just because of the water, but because we have such a quality place that we live in, it seems to me that if new residents are looking to buy and build and destroy and rebuild bigger and fancier and more threshold pushing homes in our town, there might be a discussion of ways where that's a place to leverage how our fee structure supports the departments that have carried that weight. So as we look at that next year, I think that's important. I'll be open to suggestions from CBA and conservation, especially planning, on what we have at our legal disposal is in that gray area of, you know, helping current taxpayers by not just blanket increases on residential taxes, but looking where we can intelligently leverage people who want to be here.
So I think even more of that when we get to inspections, that could roll in exactly that sort of a because we did address that a few years ago, but maybe inside.
I think.
Yeah, I mean, there have been building department adjustments in fees and other rates recently. So, you know, I feel that we're generally in a good spot there.
And I'm not, and not to belabor it, I'm not suggesting necessarily that we need to blindly increase bureaucracy. I don't think that's very fair to people either, whether the developers or builders, but I think that we just need to look at where our opportunities lie, that be physically possible, and this seems to be a place where we have a little bit of leverage and advantage.
Yeah, we have three hundred in this department, I'd say.
We have demand.
We have to hire people, and we have to, correct, so I'll look at for that.
That was a good one.
All right, inspections?
Yes.
All right.
So internally, one of the goals and one of the major efforts that's been happening in the office is to try and digitize our records. We started looking at this several years ago as sort of a macro digitization, if that's the right word, of the archives. That kind of, that was too big of a, too big of a bite in the alcohol. So at the moment, what we're doing is taking the records in the office, dozens of filing cabinets, probably hundreds of thousands of sheets of paper, and very slowly as time permits, we're doing that digitization internally and putting those records into a file that we can then access for information for retrieval. A typical problem situation that it's difficult to respond to in many cases is a new homeowner or prospective homeowner coming in and saying, I'd like to see everything that's happened at this particular address, because I'm thinking of buying this property, or I just bought this one. That's been historically difficult to come up with, because all of the zoning, sorry, all of the inspections records down in the archives are in chronological order. So unless you know when something happened at a particular address, you're out of luck, pretty much out of luck. There's other ways to get after it, but that's essentially the situation. So what we're doing now is putting everything into this new file, I am gross. And so you'll be able to see what happened to each home, what happened on each parcel. One, this is finally, it's a slow start, but it's definitely in the right direction, and it's pretty exciting. Something about how we use our inspections department clerk is kind of spearheading that effort and doing a great job on it, I have to mention.
Now, would you want or need more help with that? It's very complex to do or not, I'm just thinking.
No, I mean, I think the system's been worked out so that, yeah, we could definitely have some, have more than one person doing it. I mean, Eric is helping as well. You know, we talked about student interns and things like that.
Volunteers.
Yeah, yeah.
We need some hours, we need service hours.
That's a really, that's a really good point.
Sorry, I just, yeah.
You know, it's not rocket science, it's just kind of trying to.
I was saying, the student files, right. Those high schoolers.
The taxes, they have a lot more.
Yeah, that's a good.
Yeah, at one point, we did have a senior representative from that part of work, so that's another possible.
Right.
So that's happening. Personnel expenses, like the other departments, take up about ninety-eight and a half percent of all the money we spend. The rest of it goes to stationary and various other things. Just going over the numbers a little bit. We project this year to do just about a million dollars in permit income. That's a little less than we did in FY twenty-five, when the number was a million, one seventy-four, plus or minus. And a little more than we did in twenty-four, when the number was nine forty-five. So we're kind of in there, it's tailed off a little bit from last year, we haven't had the major projects of the development that the Green Bush T station, for example, the Drew projects, that kind of thing. And we don't play, and you may know this already, but we don't charge permit fees on things like the water treatment plant or the new school, because that would be taking it from one town park and another town park. So those, even though there's a lot of construction going on, a lot of major things happen, doesn't necessarily translate to income for our.
And just before you go, open a little context with that too, when we were saying, okay, budgets are, when we did our Nancy Permanic Amra for our financial forecast, I mean, we're down from a few years ago, over a million dollars in new growth, you were pointing.
Oh, yeah, well.
So the fact that, you know, that we have to increase some of those fees to try to help cover the complexity, but our new growth is down one point two million, right?
At least here, we'll seven hundred, we're up over one point nine.
So it's getting harder and harder.
Come on, North City.
Yeah, well, working on interest rates.
Yes, when you talk about, so when you talk about the internal work, the water treatment plant being somewhat right now, your department is still doing a lot of that internal work ourselves, right?
We are doing inspections, mostly trade inspections, probably electrical, gas, that kind of thing.
And do we keep track of, I mean, we're not charging ourselves for internal work, but do we keep track of what the cost factor of that work would have been if it were, say, private work in terms of the workload that you're doing, that you're basically doing for free through your own department?
A number would be an easy number to come up with.
I'd be curious to see, especially with a project like that, just even just so the town understands how we serve ourselves with efficiency. I mean, if we had to outsource that work to a different town, that would cost a substantial amount of money that we'd have to currently do it ourselves, right? We're not gaining revenue from it, so I just think that's a value in terms of that.
Yeah, it's a big piece of that. So, yeah, that would be an interesting practice for sure. In terms of the departmental expenses, contract increases are slight. FY twenty-six budget is two oh three, twenty-seven is two ten. The interesting change may come in what we call part-time salaries, and that's the money that we pay out to our outside inspectors, people who are actually in the field, doing inspections, and we will be for the board to adjust that rate, so you know, basically what, you know, who's involved there. It's interesting, because that's self-escalating to a large degree. If we have more inspections, we have to pay more money to that line item. But the reason we have more inspections is because there's more work to inspect, which generates more fees. So it tracks pretty closely, parallel, in parallel lines. That's been reduced for next year substantially, but if that reduction doesn't prove true, it will not prove true because income has decreased. So, you know, that's the good news and the bad news at one time. That line item accounts for actually over half of our departmental budget. No, I would. If you have any questions on inspection.
Yeah, fine, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of work. Thank you. Oh, sorry.
If you'll have a couple questions, I'm trying to count the things.
Thirty-five. Thirty-seven.
Ha, no, page twenty-nine, you say you're looking at you're looking at a bunch of different, like zoning changes? And inspections, you said you were looking at a bunch of zoning changes, including general bylaws and responsible concerns regarding short-term rentals, Airbnb's.
Oh, yes.
Could you speak a little, and then replace zoning bylaws, floodplain, watershed protection, and I know you're looking at other towns and whatnot. Can you speak to like timeline on that? Is that something we would see in twenty-seven?
It kind of depends on the desires of the town, for example.
Right.
We've talked about both of those issues for years, so that conversation is ongoing.
Okay.
If the town in general decides to get more specific and have more regulations concerning Airbnb's, for example, you know, that will be a zoning bylaw issue, zoning bylaw is basically generated through the planning office. So that's where it would start. We have looked in other towns, Kentucky, Spalm Street, there's several of those.
Okay.
But honestly, it's a little embryonic right now, because nobody's expressed a strong desire to go forward and implement. One of the major problems with that, or to be overcome, is when you have regulations, first, how are they enforced?
Right.
And second, who inspects these units, these situations, to make sure that they're complying with the regulations? So I think that's.
Because that's been, as far as like revenue, that's always been a thought, like, are we getting all the revenues from Airbnb's? Are people compliant with paying their taxes when they're in that? Like, that's always been a question, right?
I mean.
And is there laws, is the town, you need to be registered with them, what's the insight? You can be registered and say you run once and send your taxes to the state and rent a hundred fifty times.
Right.
So like, I mean, that's something that I think is interesting when you're talking about compliance and making sure people are paying their fair share, like, so. So that's something planning may or may not be looking into?
Well, I think it would have to be looked into both by building and planning.
Okay.
We enforce the building code, and the board of health is clearly involved, because they're involved in landlord tenant issues and rentals in general, and, you know, levels of compliance with health and other regulations like that. So, yeah, everybody would get involved, it would be a fairly huge undertaking.
Right, it would, that's what I would think.
So it's not, yeah.
And to even understand what the options are, what you can either even do.
Yeah, I mean, you can't.
That's kind of like my thought, like the policy option, who's doing the law?
Yeah.
To understand that.
I mean, you can't fail to be aware of it and talk about it in a town like this, so. You know, we're constantly running across that subject, for sure. As far as the floodplain and watershed protection, this section four seventy, that's an interesting one. Again, I didn't bring it up because it's something that hasn't really resolved itself, and we've talked about it for a long time. But there's a nineteen seventy-two map, which I'm sure you're familiar with.
Right.
Which really basically delineates areas within the town that are no build zones. And it's not a lot, but it's important, because it's along the coast, and it's where everybody would like to build, very often. And it was done in seventy-two with the resources available at that time and sort of scientific knowledge available at that time by town personnel, not scientists necessarily. So it's such a challenge. And in a couple of cases recently, and cases previous to this too, but it has been challenged and it's it's a thorny political problem. We're not political, but it's a thorny problem in that its validity or lack of validity is extremely valuable to the to the proponents or you know, it's if the line is here, then your property is worth several million, million dollars. If it's there, then it's maybe worth nothing or not that. There's a lot of money involved in this discussion. So it would be interesting to take a look, and we haven't gone very far with it, although as I said, chopped the butt for years, to try and replace that line or replace that section four seventy of the zoning bylaws with something based on the most up-to-date science available. Feeble regulations, which are new and, you know, get get redone fairly often to be incurred. And to have a a better definition of what if there is a no build zone, why and where it is, and that could be sustained more easily by the boards because it's the boards and the people on the boards who end up trying to enforce or argue for a particular condition on a particular site.
Right.
And sometimes that's pretty tough.
In a, in a, it's not fair to try to be general, but in a general sense, in your experience, when it comes to a board meeting with a client that has a legal representation and they're they're debating that, is is, does it tend to be a slippery slope that leads to a breakdown of the precedence protecting over over abuse of of zoning and setbacks and other rules based on those maps?
It can be, for sure.
Is it more often the client with, uh, you know, high-priced lawyer to put a point on it is winning more of the battles than the board when it comes to the zoning maps? You know, there's two.
It's a sort of a careful what you wish for.
Yeah, no.
Well, I guess it's a.
That's the like essence.
My question is, is it careful what you wish for or no? I should, if if we were to replace it with something, and it's a big question, but if we were to replace those nineteen seventy-two maps that may or may not stand to scientific validity today very easily, but but they're at least a standard for a long time.
Yep.
You start playing with a standard, you better have a better, good, strong system or else it's going to get chewed up and spit out from my perspective.
I would totally agree with that.
So I I just, you know, I I agree with, science makes sense to me, but but you better have science that stands up for lawyers.
I think by and large, the the boards and the town held the line on most of the situations that come come to my mind. There are a couple right down on the works that we'll see what happens. But, yes, you're absolutely right. Whatever we put in place, it's got to be bulletproof. And that's, that would be the goal for sure. And that would be, in my mind, a really tremendous tremendous improvement if it could, if it could be done.
I have one other point.
Please.
And I do, I'd be remiss if I didn't say this, since you say in FY twenty seven, I could bring significant changes to the department personnel and therefore budget. In all likelihood, there'll be a new commissioner, and I just want to thank you for everything and for the time and for us and and for me too, because I enjoy serving with you and all of us on. So thank you.
Yeah, everything, everything sort of refitted.
Right. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Bob. Well, now we are on to, we've got a lot of DPW. DPW Batman, Highway Snow, nice public grounds, water. But I'm going to bury, I'm going to bury the lead here. Since all of you are in the room, do you see the survey data? All, I think every, I think, if I talked, some of the.
Do they have any sleep dying over here?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to buy them some time while they get up here.
I feel like I need to put myself in the.
Some people may think that people don't love DPW.
Who, who?
I love DPW.
And guess what the town does? I I was trying to find. The water department. I was trying to find like the American Public Works Administration. They had a polling. Guys way better than the average nationally, way higher. I just want some sidewalk. But they did. I couldn't find, yeah, they did, yeah, they helped that.
And people always gloss over when there's a fire, but you also have to thank the water department. For making sure there's a nonviolent, put out that fire. Am I right?
Yes.
Yes, because people are seeing progress and they're recognizing it. And I just want everyone to know that people are responding. And it's, it's, I think it's a big deal because it's been difficult and a lot of hard things that happen. You should know that it's.
And we, we appreciate it. We, we love it. I mean, we, we like what we do.
You could tell them to call the office.
Why does it feel like no one calls it? They just want to let you know you're doing a great job. It's.
They don't. They're upset about their bill and they want to figure out how we do the payment.
Well, pray it does. No, pray for that.
I do. I do.
But the beauty of a survey is that you get, right, you know, other people who might have other opinions that you get to hear from. Something that some of us understand. But anyway, that, let's start with DPW administration.
Excellent. So DPW administration, and I'm assuming it's not on the list, is also including four eleven, who just DPW went near.
That's next one, because Sean couldn't come. Yeah, so Sean, four eleven, four thirty-three.
No problem.
Sean said, Sean said he was better than you, so he wanted to do it.
Well, well, I wanted him. I was all set and ready to go.
All right.
Four, four twenty-one administration. Basically, director admin administrative support, no major changes because of increased salaries with seven hour policy. The next item I had on my list, wow, I thought Sean got away with one, being on vacation. Nancy wouldn't allow him to do it. The next item for you is four twenty-two. Guys, I'll start with that one.
Yeah, that's.
I'll just be contractual. I'll start with that. My green is true, maintain the roadways. We had a very productive year with paving. They branched out into neighborhoods. We've been focusing on the mains. Total increase was above forty-six thousand dollars, a majority of that in union wages and stipends. One of the programs we've been doing is we've been working with our guys to get CDLs. As they get CDLs, they decay more as well as stipends. We need CDLs to drive the bigger trucks. So that's one of the requirements we have. The major change, I think the net change on top of that is about five thousand dollars. And part of that is towards the lighting. Highways can be getting killed since we've taken over the street lighting. There's a lot of lights that go down and we have to hire electrician to blow up the market to make it better.
So shocker, some of those LED lights that was supposed to last for twenty years or whatever. That's for twenty years. I think it's a little bit of a little.
They don't nearly have quite even.
It, true. But to get you out of your focus, but we've talked a lot about cost of putting in materials. What are we seeing lately for general highway material fees?
I mean, we haven't seen anything really crazy decreasing. Yes, yes. You know, it's leveled to going up.
Okay.
So far in in highway materials.
Okay, good.
We have an asphalt pit coming out from the county. Soft budgets have gone up a little bit. Some of the materials we're using are still creeping up, but that's.
Charlie, I have a question on the on the CEO. Does that impact, could it positively all the cloud necessity and driver availability? If if more of our employees internally are doing CEOs, does that help us?
It it helps us hugely because the way we structure our personnel is you have a labor and you have an equipment operator. Equipment operator gets a higher rate and it's incentivized so that the guys will get CDLs because we can CDLs to drive the bigger trucks. So obviously, if we have a running dump truck, we do have enough guys to run the trucks we have, but having that flexibility is huge.
I mean, probably, I would assume it's it's going to help with overtime in a sense, if you only have a few guys that.
Well, if if we would like to say, and we'll about solving, we consult, you know, a lot of times, we bring the guys in a couple hours early. We'll put the big trucks out because we can cover all the main roads with big trucks. They don't have to keep coming back in as opposed to all one ton. So we we get a lot more guys to work on that. So instead of having five guys, we can have one guy in the city.
It does help because the water department, one of the guys is going out, who runs one of the biggest rivers in town, he's going out with a hurry or a footage in. And one of the younger kids that does have a CEO is jumping, jumping in. He's he's sort of carrying everything. So it is quick.
Unless it's just contracting out. Well, we can't even get the contractors out. That's the basic problem. Before, you know, a while ago, we used to, you know, put out all the sand. Contractors did all the sand. We've internalized it now, bought all our parts out of speed, do a lot of it on spot. Because we're just having a hard time finding contractors because with the contractors from the state, they require carrying millions of insurance. And we've got a couple of linkers here where they just don't get out all that much. And it's kind of hot for them to carry down a lot of insurance, paying that little money. And then, and they're not, you know, no use. It's tricky. You you beat up your equipment pretty significantly. Thanks for that. Questions? I don't know, but. Fair enough. Four twenty-three is the text that I have on my list, snow life budget. That's at a level funded budget and then we don't, no changes to it.
Right on the snow. No.
Two points.
Two points.
Like eight minutes once or twice. We like the last.
A little bit.
We like the last.
Let's recharge some of the.
Let's recharge the wells. You know, we're not about to feel so bad.
What's it costing now? What's it costing now?
Fingers crossed for Sunday.
Well, yeah, you had, yeah, was it?
It varies depending on how much equipment we put out. We increased our rates this year, so I have to recalculate. But it is. We can.
It's up there.
Yeah, we spend a lot of money once.
Thirty minutes of snow would be great.
So we're between four thousand and.
We can afford, we can afford like an hour and a half of snow.
But it takes four hours to clean up that hour's snow.
Yeah.
Well, that's.
All right, go ahead. Shut it off.
The ice affects us a lot because you get a lot of sanding, sanding with the ice in these small storms that go on for twelve hours.
But I mean, that's an example of a budget, that if we get a blizzard, that budget's my lord. So I just want to make sure folks know how close we are.
Yeah, all the icing stuff. Fascinating. Get a couple of the tracking, the DPS tracking. Where all the worst ice spots are. They need to know this.
Yeah, they need to know that.
Right. Just one there real quick. You have like data on where the worst.
Well, we we know, we've been, we've been experimenting sometimes. One of the other things that people see is we're putting up fences, snow fences. So we know where some of the worst areas are where we've been icing up. So Mike's in the Mary man, I've been putting these snow fences up. You see them along the side, like the driveway in different areas on all the open bucket. And what they do is they prevent the flow over to continually leave all those icing areas. So we know where they are. We usually go out with a sander, but now sometimes we don't have to because it's snow fences protecting and preventing that from coming. So the guys still put a job of tracking, that's what's going on.
We just, we know the problem areas.
Yeah. That sounds great work. Great.
Um, jump into public grounds?
Yeah.
Total changes here, about fifty-five thousand dollars, mostly due to union requirements with paying increases in stipends. The biggest challenge we've been facing here is the loss of trees due to disease. The ash core has really been playing adequate with us. People don't understand how many trees are coming down. Cost of removing trees is very expensive. We finally did receive delivery of our tree truck. So the guys are going to be doing some training in that, as well as we're going down to Plymouth to do a more advanced training on it. And we're hoping to get our guys doing more tree work where we can. Come train at my house.
Those are just the same thing.
Yeah, West End, practice in the West End.
I mean, there's so many trees, we could just, you know, I mean, I can. I can have a field trip on trees all day. You know, it is very expensive. Some of the trees, we do need to bring frames in and that's what we're going, that's what it costs. But for some of the hangers and some of the other stuff, we'll be able to water it ourselves, save the costs. So that when I bring it in, prove four or eight hours, we could go out and sneak up and do a best house fighting with Mary Ben and Beth.
At least should we ever get replaced or not?
You what?
Like when the trees are being taken down, what do they get? Replaced into small trees?
So if they were, we, yeah, we actually have, we've got some trees out here that we planted that are, I don't want to say it's a tree garden, but we've got some trees that we can put in different locations. Mike does some replacement. I'll let you talk about that.
Yeah, I've got some money for replacements. If someone's adamant about having a tree, you know, put back in in the spot that is or if it is a certain road, we will put a tree back in, you know, on those, those areas that are. You know, we're trying to put as many as we can back in possible, but a lot of these ones are just right on the edge of a road that are causing a problem, you know, that they're not in really someone's yard or anything like that. They're almost in, causing problems with the asphalt too. And Karen Joseph, sometimes strong arms the contractors because they've taken down some trees that and they don't, they want to put them back in that area. She does give us them to put in different areas around.
I just remember hearing a couple of years ago when they were taking out a bunch of trees and they said they're replacing it and they still have it consuming it, not sure I know.
No, don't want to give us, tell them, let us know where it is. You know, that's the case. I mean, they're not going to be ten-foot trees.
No, they're like, that's a couple of years old.
But, you know, we're always going to pop some trees. And it all depends on the location. If it's nearby, it's always going to be problematic. We're not going to put a tree. It's going to be some of these problems.
This, the, because it's a great question, but as a point of clarification, I would imagine there's got two major segments there. One is a dead tree that's not providing environmental impact currently. So when it gets taken down, it's not. I'm not going to get a tiny tree. I want us to plant more trees and more wildlife. But if a dead tree is dead, it's not providing oxygen, it's not providing root structure, you know. As opposed to a tree which is taken down simply because of construction, you know, new house construction.
Well, we, and we did, we don't take trees down due to construction.
That's more stormwater by law and other things that are already creates some necessity for replant.
Correct. And Mike works with Karen Joseph also on that. She is a landscape architect. She's helpful of picking these species of trees to put in certain areas where it's best. So do those to Karen if that helps. That's.
All set. You're right.
Yeah, done.
As you can see, we're in the water. We need, they're not handsake, they're a very good job.
Protray.
Okay, clarify.
Protray. Um, so Sue is one by all brand, and I'll let him tell you some of the highlights and give you a brief update of what's going on.
Thank you. Exciting times over the sewer department. We are now fully staffed down in our division. And I'm pleased to report that all of our operators have grade five or higher licenses for our facility. So we're very proud of our operators for making those achievements. We're making strides on our INI reduction programs, gaining back passing our systems so that we can provide a sewer expansion for North City. And beginning to work our way into phased upgrades of the wastewater tube plant facility. There are some modest increases in the budget, largely driven by operating the facility and making that capacity and making sure the facility is operating to receive those additional flows from North City. Drivers like increased chemical costs are factors outside of our department's control, and we just need to meet those costs.
So if I can touch on that just a little bit, we are probably one of the few communities, not just in the South Shore, in the whole state, that has fully licensed operators throughout the whole plant. So that's kind of a big part. You know, it's been put through, it's incentivized for the guys, they, they're paying increases as they get more licenses. Good push forward.
I have no questions. I'm delighted to hear that everybody has that grade five license program. Because that means you're running everything at its optimal, safest way. I think that's very important for people to know, it's very important.
I, I probably tell everyone, I, five years ago, I didn't realize the importance, just how vital sewer department is to a community. Like, it is, I tell everybody, like, it's probably what you want to learn most, like, how important it is for a community, or else it would be chaos. Literally chaos, if the system falls apart, I just want to say thank you for all the work you do and, uh, really appreciate the field service, the, the whole community riding. We all need to spread the word about what this is for, uh, all the work you guys do, so thank you.
Thank you, wonderful community, it's our pleasure to work here.
So, yeah.
Is there a question?
Yes.
While you have a little, do you capital planning have that question on the headworks? About the design versus full construction, you know, do you want, do you want to ask them that question or not? That's the only one that would come up tonight.
Oh, um.
The capital planning committee recommended the headworks, but they brought to your attention that their concern was it wasn't designed yet. So they were concerned appropriating the whole five million might be too soon to do that.
Yeah.
I suppose it's phasing, you're right, I suppose.
Which is what was being done with the raw water intake, a lot of the park. They were in favor of the project, they were just asking.
Uh, so we can chat about that briefly. Um, we're pushing hard on that because that'll help improve for North City. We don't want that to impact us turning this up on North City. We want to update the headworks, we can get it in, it was identified as part of the, uh, study to do. And, um, you know, we just, we don't want to risk another season of saying, okay, it's designed now, now we're going to wait for it to go forward. Because, uh, North City without it would be ready to be impacted by.
That's a very good answer.
Yes, and whatever is not spent, we turn back in.
Correct.
Right, if it's.
It's not like we're going to blank check it.
Right, it's not a blank check, it's one role, but we just want to be prepared so we can go forward.
I like it. Given that how it works, that's, I might be wrong, that's the substructure that's going to be underneath the building that, uh, will occur when to.
No, that's the water treatment plant. Uh, the sewer treatment plant, we have an existing headworks there, it's a little outdated, we want to update it so we can take more material out, move out the flow, and have a better quality of waste that goes out. And unless we're, like, so.
Same, it's not different than what it's like.
Thank you for that reminder, Nick.
Yeah, that's the only one for them tonight.
Yeah. Take the rest of the night off.
Okay, um, next is the water department, it's, um, on diaric, and it's a very band of, uh, people. And, uh, they do a great job keeping everything together, they're band-aiding the existing plant and looking forward to the new plant coming online, as I'm sure everybody else is. Um, which one we're doing a lot better than Bridgewater, and, uh, I'll hand that on to, uh.
As good as you can.
That's a, that's a little bar.
I'll, I'll hand that over there. Um, so along the same lines with licenses, um, the T four licenses, the high treatment license, uh, that you can have as a treatment plant operator. Currently, including my T four, we have three T four licenses and a T three license in the current plant. T, you can run the plant with a T three. Uh, so right now, we have another, the new one, we're going to have a T one. So right now, we have the highest level of licenses spread across the staff we've had since I've been here. The new hire who's got a T one is excellent. I, the only impediment to him getting to that T three level is just the regulations, how much time it takes and how long you have to hold for the license. If everything stays the same, I don't want to jinx us when we move into the new plant, we should have a full staff of all. At a minimum, T three licenses and most likely all T fours. Um, we have a couple of distribution employees that have increased their distribution licenses, up in C D Ls. We have a few of them that are taking treatment classes, um, to get a treatment license also, which will help us. Um.
And as a reminder, in fact, we go off, when we do get a new plant in top of running, we will be looking for an operator that, because we have so much more going on with the plant.
Which is the same with this budget.
And everyone should realize the fact that both of these departments have a fully licensed, which is difficult enough, and having all these professionals speaks to leadership here. Working, because it's not, these people don't want to, if they want to work, you know, with real professionals, what's happening, so thank you both for that, that's credible. And I hope they're excited as they're about to embark on a new water treatment plant, and this is going to be phenomenal.
Actually, I think they're ready.
I think they're ready. So, yeah. Um, a lot of work has been done by the staff, and with meter replacement, we're down to about five hundred residential meters to get them all to be the drive lines. Which increases, obviously, makes it more efficient reading, but also with the data logging, we can do. Uh, the office staff, Lyndon, Nora, do a great job if they see any kind of spike in usage, abnormal. Uh, these new meters help us catch that earlier, and they may preemptive calls to be bolted, just say, we've noticed the usage seem to have gone up, you may want to check for leaks in the places below. And I maybe cut some abatements off with the pass and help the residents, you know, before they get that shocking water.
Right.
Uh.
That's correct.
I believe that's, I think it's ahead of schedule. Yeah, yeah, the staff has been really cranking out meter replacements. Um, a lot, when we do that, um, they've been checking for the lead service line in Florida, uh, for the private side. There's, there's some to go, we've knocked that down really quickly. And I'd say, as far as the budget goes, I think, the, the chap, I'd, I'd say the chap, the biggest challenge we have right now is probably technical services. Um, I'd describe the current treatment plant kind of, you know, in the end of life care stage. Um, so we're trying to keep, we're trying to keep it going, hanging on until the new one comes online. And a lot of regulations, um, from E P A that filtered down to E E P, require technical service from, from outside of contractors to, for data management and to gather information. You know, put it into usable form for compliance, so that, I'd say that category is a big challenge.
But it's also under control. Now, that's kind of state is essentially what we're saying.
Yeah, like, well, that service line inventory is a perfect example. I mean, trying to tackle that with our staff in the office, really, given the timeframe, would have been impossible. You have to bring in, so for some of the stuff outside of contractors. You just, again, follow us up here, that's now four different departments, except that federal, state regulations force them to hire outside, I think it's something to do with the complexity of. The regulations.
Yeah.
On the other end, that's.
And we're not kind of like the legal council, we.
Are you looking to hire the chief plant operator, like, just next December when the plant has its, like, soft opening, or when?
Well, right now, we, we.
It's like.
I just.
Yeah. It's like a restaurant, it's not. We'll evaluate as it comes, we will need an operator, um, if we do a chief operator or regular operator, we can make that decision as we go. Um, right now, we have assistant superintendent, chief operator, someone in the past of chief operator. Um, contract with Mike, who required to do a chief operator.
And that's a competitive salary?
I, I think so, yes.
Uh, one sort of unrelated question on water. Um, when, this is completely out of my wheelhouse, um, I was thinking about water towers the other day for some completely limited reason, and I thought about City. And when we have the new plant go online, uh, it's a bigger plant, there's longer stretches of pipes going back and forth to the old section. Do we have idea of how that impacts just general residential water pressures, and do we have?
Yes, I can, I can give that, you know, mind. Um, well, we're going to be coming before the board sometime in the very near future to talk about water plants, um, about water towers. We have a couple older water towers, and we've actually done some engineering, and we have to rebuild a new water tower. We have a couple options where we can build them, and we are going to need to build one, and then what we'll have to do is take down one of our existing ones and put a new one in that place, and then deactivate the third one. Um, the water pressure should stay the same, it should be fine, we're just, we'll just keep up those tags to a certain level, should be okay. So we have a couple of different options of where we're going to present the board, if we're going to do it. Uh, one is the pushing area, you know, and one is a couple of different locations, we'll let the engineer put that, but that's kind of slow. It's coming down, it's coming down the road, yeah, because our, our, um, our tanks are older, and, and they do need, they need extensive work. And like anything, there's new regulations now on them. Um, a couple of years ago, a couple of guys got killed in a hangar, so now, instead of having a ladder going up, we need walkways that go all the way around. So we have to retrofit some of our, uh, potential water towers with walkways to go up, and it gets very expensive. Uh, so we, we built a new one that would meet all the regulations and compliance. How much is somewhere they go about when it's coming down the pipe?
Yeah.
Yep, we've already, we've had an engineer to deal with, we haven't been able to focus as much on it, it's been like.
Uh, well, that, just a little subject review, still, if you're going to be, or the guests will be here for the. Yes, for the kind of water main replacement design engineering and. That's Sean Harris.
So, thank you. Have a nice fall.
Thank you. Uh, which I already prepared for.
Um, we can do the water main replacement. So, uh, we went, we looked into the next phase of engineering for the water main replacement, and, um, we were looking, we know we have an older water line in Clap Road. And we were looking at some of the water lines in the Aves. Um, it's broken down here with the connections up, uh, we'd probably break this down into. Well, I thought you were.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
No, problem at all, um, we'd probably break this out into two projects. Um, it might be one in one year, one the next, it might be, it might be both at the same time, it's going to depend on how, uh, how the project falls for, uh, redoing some of the line on three A. It's been held up by state purpose.
All right, so this is, this is all three A, and then, uh.
Clap Road.
Thomas Clapper.
Yeah.
Yeah, any questions?
Will Clap Road get paved after the water main? It's like sort of patched right now.
It is patched, um, that would be our plan, we would set, we would let it settle out, just like we're doing Stern's Meadow, and, uh, probably gave it following. So there'd be an inconvenience sign, but it wouldn't be much worse than it is now. Standard, we set with standard, I was going to say, we got Jericho. Yeah, Jericho Road, we were supposed, we were going to try to pave it this year, but we get held up with gas company, gas companies.
Is that going to be early spring?
Motion?
I hope so. So does everyone that tries to grow it.
Motion?
Yeah.
Yeah. Move that the select board awards a contract for engineering design services for the Aves and Thomas Clap Road Water Main Design to Weston and Sampson. When amount not to exceed one hundred twenty thousand six hundred dollars.
One more second, but, uh, slate them, all in favor, I, it is you and us. A little bit of instruction.
So this contract is an extension, we went up to bid last year, it was a one-year contract with the option to extend for an additional two years each year. Um, if each party agrees to it, both parties agree to it, and, uh, we're coming to the board to extend the contract.
Motion? Yeah, so we have went up to bid, this is our new all, questions?
Same price.
Same price.
Okay.
All right. Motion, move to award the one-year renewal on contract one four dash G S dash forty-seven. Spoke of the instruction as evolution to brief, with Sean Harris Enterprise at the unit price of one hundred forty-nine dollars per ton.
I did, I just got more seconds, I don't have a lot of favor, uh, I have you and us.
Thank you very much.
I learned how, why do you, new, thank you, thank you everyone.
They all ran away.
No, it's good, we're, I mean, this, getting this done, going to help our advisory, it's all going, it's going to help the whole process.
I'm prepared to make all the motions.
Yes.
I think we got a good monthly number for that.
Yes.
I think I'm the same thing.
I want, I wanted first thing, Charlie, Jen, they were in our office for all the work you've done, we're doing annual license reviews, all the work.
We've done it together.
Put it this all together, and just so we can, as folks know, we've talked about this in, in the past, uh, ensuring, and everything. Find the equity to make sure these are aligning, and if we have, if we see anything, um, that doesn't, and they're going to help us flag it. Um, but as of now, we think we're pretty good, we're going to keep continuing with luck, and we'll, we'll continue to make sure that things are aligned. But again, the work you've done, thank you so much, it's a lot. It's answered all my questions. It was a good problem for us to have, to have all of these different wonderful, wonderful places that everyone's going to shop for. Motion?
I just have one other thing for the new members, um, if you're a part of any of the.
Oh, yeah.
If you're a part of the clubs, which is Citroen Racing Fitness, Heather League of, Citroen Country Club, Citroen Harbor Yacht Club, and or, um, Citroen Coast B F W. If you're an actual member of those clubs, usually you have stayed on that one.
Oh, that's right.
You've done it in the past, usually you have stayed from the one, that you're an actual club member, this is not related to going to any restaurant or anything, but it's club members. Just the housekeeping, we've done it in the past.
You don't have to, yeah.
I don't know if you're a member of any of those clubs in the past, Karen.
Like, like Hall, I think, and Cat Club or something.
Right, okay, so just.
And you just say, I have stayed in front.
Because you're from, otherwise, what?
All right, motion, here we go.
Move that the select board vote to renew the following in holder slash bed and breakfast licenses for two thousand twenty-six. In Citroen Harbor, Joandy Natalie, three forty-nine, Padley Road, D V A Pearl. Move that the select board vote to renew the following retail package store slash all alcohol beverage licenses for two thousand twenty-six. Leadnea Liquors, D V A, Green Bush Package Store, Inc., Kishan, Inc., D V A, Citroen Package Store, Inc. Board one forty-three LLC, White House Enterprises, Inc., D V A, Harborside Wine and Spirits. Move that the select board vote to renew the following retail package store wine and malt beverage licenses for two thousand twenty-six. Jackman, D V A, Seven Eleven, New Harbor Court, D V A, Driftway General Store, Malady's Fish Market Court, H and A Brothers, D V A, Sandville General Market. M F J Market, Inc., D V A, The Village Market. Move that the select board vote to renew the following restaurant wine and malt beverage licenses for two thousand twenty-six. Cosmos Cafe LLC, K D R Foods LLC, D V A, and Salt March Whinders. Move that the select board vote to renew the following restaurant slash all alcoholic beverage licenses for two thousand twenty-six. Casa Verde, Inc., D V A, Casa Verde, Seapiece Woodfire Pizza, Front Street LLC, D V A, Chopsticks and Forks. Green Eye Lady, Inc., D V A, Galley, Iverian Tavern, Inc., Nana Enterprises LLC, D V A, The River Club. Oak Callahan's LLC, D V A, The Voyage, Oro Restaurant LLC, D V A, Oro. Salt Society, Inc., D V A, Salt Society, Citroen Tavern, Inc., D V A, Citroen Tavern. Legacy Management, D V A, Millworth Restaurant, Leclercy, Inc., D V A, TK O'Malley's Sports Cafe. Amancet, Inc., D V A, The Oyster Man, The Vine Bar LLC, D V A, The Vine Bar, The Drift Inn Incorporated, D V A, The Drift Inn. Move that the select board vote to renew the following general on-premise all alcohol beverage license for two thousand twenty-six. The Real Harbor Theater LLC, Wedgewood Beverages, Inc., D V A, The Barker House by Wedgewood Weddings. Move that the select board vote to renew the following club all alcoholic beverage licenses for two thousand twenty-six. Cituate Post thirty-one sixty-nine, the BFW Inc., Citroen Harbor Yacht Club, Citroen Country Club, Inc. Paddle and Golf Club, Inc. Move that the select board vote to renew the following club wine and malt beverage licenses for two thousand twenty-six. Cituate Racket and Fitness Incorporated. Move that the select board vote to renew the following fire series order permit for malt licenses for two thousand twenty-six. Untold Brewery LLC.
Alright, I'll, I'll give you a break there, go for it. Further, move that the select board vote to renew the following common licenses for twenty twenty-six. Port one four three LLC, Brew one four three, Casa Verde, Inc., Dune Business S, Casa Verde. CDW Enterprises, Dune Business S, Pop Corner, China Gourmet, Surrse's Brado. Cosmos Cafe LLC, Seapiece Woodfire Pizza, Front Street LLC, Dune Business S. Chopsticks and Forks, Brusts, Three Six Seven, Ganet LLC, Dune Business S, Dribbles, Gannero. R, C, S, J, R, Dune Business S, Dribbles, Brook Street, New Harbor Court, Driftway General Store. Gateway Donut LLC, Dune Business Donuts, Red Lady, Inc., the galley, Get Steamed, Inc., DBA, Rockin Burgers. Harbor House Pizza, H and A Brothers, DBA, Sand Hills General Store, Paddle and Golf Club, Inc., Tennessee News. Purdy Tavern, Need Kitchen, uh Jackman, DBA, Seven Eleven. Uh Leadnea Liquors, DBA, Green Bush Package Store, Inc., Lucky Finn, LLC, DBA, Lucky Finn, two oh six, Front Street. Lucky Finn Cafe LLC, DBA, Lucky Finn, forty-eight dash three Driftway. Legacy Management, DBA, Millworth Restaurant, Light House Enterprises, Inc. DBA Harbor Side Wines and Spirits, Kishin, Inc., DBA, Citroen Package Store. McCloskey, Inc., DBA, TK O'Malley Sports Cafe. Uh MFJ Market, Inc., DBA, The Village Market, KDR Foods LLC, DBA, the Salt March Winery. Oris, Sub Pizza, Inc., Mike's, Citroen Harbor, Inc., DBA, San Juan Harbor. Malanese Guiteria, Malanese Fish Market Court, Known As Homey. Situate Tavern, Inc., DBA, Situate Tavern, S A I Convenience Book, DBA, Dad's Place, Cryshon General Store, Citroen Big Link. DBA, Gutter Tooties, uh Citroen Racket and Fitness, Inc., Split Rock Social, Inc., DBA, Split Rock Citra. O'Callahan's LLC, DBA, The Voyage, Oro Restaurant LLC, DBA, Oro. Edcrass, DBA, River Club, Salt Society, Citroen Country Club, Inc., Citroen Harbor Yacht Club. Sea Salt Mercantile, Superior Lotterie, LLC, The Drift Inn, the end of Citroen Harbor. Amancet, Inc., DBA, The Oysterman, uh Joan, uh Dee Tally, three four nine, Heather, DBA, Pearl. Real Harbor Theater, LLC, The Vine Bar, LLC, Untold Brewery LLC, Cituate Post three one six nine, the BFW, Inc., which were beverages. Beverages, Inc., DBA, The Barker Restaurants with Weddings, XR Foods LLC, DBA, Fresh Food Sandwiches, back to you.
Move that the select board vote to renew the following entertainment licenses for two thousand twenty-six. Casa Verde, Inc., DBA, Casa Verde, Seapiece Woodfire Pizza, Green Eye Lady, Inc., DBA, Galley. Paddle and Golf Club, Inc., Iberian Tavern, Lucky Finn Cafe LLC, DBA, Lucky Finn, two oh six, Front Street. Legacy Management, DBA, Millworth Restaurant, Malanese Fish Market, Oak Allen Hands LLC, DBA, The Voyage. Oro Restaurant LLC, DBA, Oro, Nana Enterprises, DBA, River Club. Salt Society, Citroen Country Club, Inc., Citroen Harbor Yacht Club. Split Rock Social, Inc., DBA, Split Rock Citra, McCloskey, Inc., DBA, TK O'Malley's, KDR Foods LLC. DBA, Salt March Winery, Untold Brewery LLC, Cituate Post three one six nine, the BFW, Inc. The Drift, Inc., DBA, The Drift, Inc. Wedgwood Beverages, Inc., DBA, The Barker House by Wedgwood Wedding, Amancet, Inc., The Oysterman. The Vine Bar LLC, move that the select board vote to renew the following septic licenses for two thousand twenty-six. All Town, Inc., PF Spencer Junior, Inc., McDonald's Septic Services. Ronby, Inc., DBA, KR Anderson Pumping Company, Rodondo Davis Senator Pumping, Inc. Saurus Sanitation Pumping, Inc. Move that the select board vote to renew the following bowling license for two thousand twenty-six, Cituate Bowling. Move that the select board vote to renew the following movie theater license for two thousand twenty-six, The Real Harbor Theater LLC. Move that the select board vote to renew the following class two licenses for two thousand twenty-six. Alfred Coyle, DBA, Seacrest Auto, McBride's Diagnostic Repair, Citrus Shell Incorporated. Move that the se- select board vote to renew the following class three licenses for two thousand twenty-six. Ryan Allen LLC, Cryptic and Lipstick, DBA, Ray's Repair Shop, pending Cory background check and fingerprinting approval from Citroen Police Department. Move that the select board vote to renew the following livery licenses for two thousand twenty-six. Coastal Livery pending all required documents and approved Cory background and fingerprinting by Citroen Police Department. Femire Enterprises pending all required documents and approved Cory background and fingerprinting by Citroen Police Department.
Backhand.
Move by Mr. Omar Second, uh, straight on, all in favor? Aye, unanimous, well done. What? Alright. Um, does anyone have any?
Liaison reports, correspondence, sure, I have one piece of correspondence. This is a unaddressed letter by Catherine Seaton. It was sent to the copy to the planning board and she asked, it was basically two paragraph here. She is expressing her concern about the max out parking aspects of our senior center. And expressing the desire that uh you pay careful attention when we're doing the housing project there and make sure that there is increased parking. I know that is part of the program to help that out. And then also, uh her final paragraph is uh remarking that she, at one time during COVID. Did approve of sidewalk parking on Front Street, but no longer agrees with it now. And claims that it's an obstruction and that we're losing three parking spaces in front of the town. You can look at the character.
Yeah.
It's in the package.
Is it?
Yeah.
Pack up.
Yeah.
What else?
Uh this is my only liaison thing, I don't know, I told some of you guys, one of my friends picked this up at the Cohasset Library a couple of weeks ago. It is a handy dandy kit with Narcan test scripts and a Sharp container that they give out. Um anonymously in their um public bathrooms in their um public buildings and I thought that would be.
Oh, Stephen?
Great for the town, situ it for people to be able to get.
You could do it in Sailor Blue.
We could do it in Sailor Blue, I, I have not made an effort to find out where they're getting their funding from, but I'm sure we will have money coming from that overview.
That's cool.
Just an, another option for people who don't wanna go in, you know, give their identities over, that may have somebody who's at risk in their lives. And um the planning board is, got their workshop this Thursday for anyone who wants to put their two sets in for the zoning by law changes at six thirty. Well, I.
Still more, what's not?
Just for water, I don't think it's on the.
So I'm saying.
Alright, I didn't read that part.
Just want the, I'll add as the uh library uh. Somebody met uh yesterday, just uh some good news. Federally, the Institute of Museum and Library Services um has been interested in state all its federal grants. Which are planning to be eliminated, but those are all reinstated. Don't know that affects immediately, but it's good news, it's for the library. Patient, why? Uh, anything else?
I have one other thing, oh, just one other. And that is for next, we meet again next week, right? Um and Waterways is gonna, um the Harbor Master Project's on there. We will be getting a note from the Waterways Commission that as of last night did vote on a five-year plan. Which was something we've been asking, um and it's their thoughts on the five-year plan. The Harbor Master also has thoughts.
Alright, Mr. Chair, anything?
So that'll be just to tee it up for next week, that is, we've got a lot of harbor stuff on the agenda next week. We've got the, right, don't we, have the.
Usability study.
Usability study, we have the um looking at the um Waterways, the enterprise fund. And um how we will raise revenue for that, and then we um also have a river master. So it's a big, it's a big week next week.
For the hollow.
For the hollow.
So, Mr. Chair, last night CPC did meet, I was not able to attend through a business committee in town, but I did call one of the family that gave me the update. Who showed that I needed for next week.
Correct.
Uh mine was the Gold Park Way Development Commission that Pam uh discussed. Uh they voted, uh I wanna say at the end, we can't say at the end, but uh they voted to recommend to the board, which they'll be coming back to the authority. To recommend that we take the ten percent engineering design specs that currently we have to the thirty percent level of design specs. Through the engineering firm, uh with plan one of the three proposed plans that the engineer came up with. Which was the plan that includes the most parking. Uh and the big mill, aquatic drift, to recommend the inclusion in plan one of the full improvement to the. Uh now, go.
I was happy to hear that part.
That's good. Great, so we got. Alright, um that was, no, no, me.
No comments.
Yeah, so, motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, motion to adjourn. With the, I need no second, Sarah's in all favor? Aye.